Literally fear myself. Yeah, because it says the instructions. Yeah, on a microphone.
This article about reparations. Article I didn't read about reparations. So, yeah, very confused. And they copy what were. At least discussing.
I thought, are you getting excited for summer?
Am I getting what?
Excited for summer?
I thought you said sad for summer.
No. Well, hard, yeah.
I'm pretty excited. About allergies.
You found reparations.
What?
On reparations, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
I will leave it. Yeah. Great.
But I thought it helped.
Yeah, thank you.
Third grade dropout happening tomorrow.
Oh goodness, you have a third grader. A third grader and a.
First. Yeah. So they're back for the summer.
I miss the people. Right, it's a construct and reality there is. Um, that's cool.
Yeah, they're back for the summer, although they're going to be going down to LA to do. Hello?
Hello? Yeah, I know. Yeah. I just sent it to you.
Hello? We're just talking about excitement for some.
Having, I have a kindergarten. Yeah, that makes like more than two. My special is the same sound.
No, but don't you psychically, I think until I was about forty-five, I psychically was on.
Yeah.
School calendar, summer, no, it may, no difference to my real schedule.
It's different for my whole family because my wife is super.
Oh, yeah. Sure.
Where, where she?
The window. Yeah, she loves it. Different, like she's taught high school for ten years at a charter school, was like a very different.
What charter?
I've been Mendocino County, Nupaya, where we used to live before we moved to car. And that's great, yeah. Uh, Nupaya?
Uh, looking at Nupaya, Boom Bell. Balala.
Cool, yeah.
Off the coast. And Arena.
Andrew Pierce, you're here. Woo-hoo.
Of course.
It's great. I have hair, yeah. Yeah, I couldn't shower yesterday, so. I think we have a quorum now, I know. Kim and John are both.
Represented a consensus?
I didn't hear from Mary, but she was included on. Her phone.
Okay, if we could call this meeting of the special meeting of the Portola Valley Equity Committee to order. Start. Indeed, I will, yes. We'll do a roll call. Andrew Brown. Adnan. If, if the car.
It's the car.
It's the car.
Yes, here, thank you. Here.
Here. Judy Murphy, here, and Andrew Pierce.
Yeah.
And Kim Maranucci. Here, excellent. I believe John Silver will be joining us and Jonathan Clark is joining virtually from the dorms at Eastside, but they don't open till five-thirty, so he's a few minutes late. Could I have a volunteer, could we have a volunteer to read the land acknowledgement? Which is located at the bottom of our agenda.
I'll read it.
Great, thank you.
The town of Portola Valley acknowledges the colonial history of this land we dwell upon. "The unceded territory of the Ramitoush, Oloney, Tamian Nation, and Mawika Oloney, who endured a human and cultural genocide that included removal from their lands and their sacred relationship to the land. Portola Valley recognizes that we profit from the commodification of land seized from indigenous peoples and now bear the ecological consequences. We seek to understand the impact of these legacies on all beings and to find ways to make repair."
Thank you. Approval of minutes from our last meeting, which was April eleventh. Taken by Kirsten, who sadly is an excellent secretary, but no longer.
Thanks for tonight, although I'm not volunteering to be the secretary.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Yeah, we don't, if anybody wants to be full-time, you know, every meeting secretary, that's great. Until that happens, we'll just have a rotating secretary model.
This has just a word error under new business, the near the end of B. It says before rosters are confined, I think it means confirmed. Auto correct.
John Silver, welcome. Meetings reflect that Silver has joined us. Okay, changing that word, great, anybody else see anything else in these excellent minutes that they would like to change?
The only other thing was it looked like there was a duplication, I couldn't figure out, you know, there was a minute and a good, and then it it went on and on, it had some sort of a rough version of it that was printed.
I see that.
It was confusing, that should get.
Yes, you're right.
If I can get that in doc form, I'll make those corrections.
Thank you. Okay, unless there are other changes people would like to see to the draft minutes, if anybody has a motion to approve them as amended?
I move to approve as amended.
Thank you, anybody would like second? Murphy seconds. I think we have to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm going to stay. Member.
Okay, we've got all ayes and one abstention from John Silver. Maranucci abstains also. Great. And may the minutes reflect that our council liaison, Mary Houghey, has joined us at five-thirty-eight. Thank you, thanks for joining us. Okay, moving on to new business, welcome to new members, Andy Brown and John Silver. Welcome. Thank you for joining us, I believe you, they were confirmed, Mary, can you confirm they were confirmed? Excellent. Cool. Mary, do you want to sit where you just have a microphone? No pressure, okay, sounds good. And, and I will remind us to speak into the microphone, partly so everyone here can hear, but also if anybody wanted to watch the video recording of this, you really have to get very close. Okay, welcome, welcome Andy and John.
Welcome.
Welcome. We have no visual of welcome so far, but
That's good enough.
Just to say welcome, yeah, excellent. Subcommittee reports, all right.
Do we have new business first, sorry?
Uh, I put subcommittee reports on new business, maybe would it best be on old business? Okay. Well, we can, we can do that last.
That's where it is, so, or it's where it is.
It's where it is, so we can keep it there.
Okay, for the future though, I'll put some committee reports on, on old business. Thanks.
I have for law enforcement. In November two oh two-two, the Board of Supervisors, San Antonio County Board of Supervisors voted unanimously to set up oversight in the Sheriff's Department. And then you know, since we have a new sheriff committed to transparency, integrity, et cetera, it's a perfect time to be doing this. The county has contracted with both the National Association for Civilian Oversight of Law Enforcement and the Stanford University John Gardner Center for Youth in Their Communities to help support the effort. Expectation is that they'll have an ordinance in place by year end to the Operation One Two Oh Two Four.
Great. Also related to law enforcement, I thought it was worth mentioning, just the sheriff's contract, what's happening there? Judy, do you want to describe it, or?
I, I didn't, wasn't able to go to that.
Okay, yeah, the only, I mean, just broadly, the, the sheriff's contract is up for revision and the cost increase is huge, it's normally like a one-point-four million, historically has been a one-point-four million dollar contract for the services that Portola Valley receives from the sheriff, and they're increasing it about fifty percent, like eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar increase. So for our town's budget, that is like huge, crazy. And it's not that the services will actually change the sheriff's office rationale, it's that they're accounting for previously uncovered costs. But so an interesting conversation regarding law enforcement in our town.
Accounting for uncharged costs before, this is a one-time deal and then next time it'll go back?
No, it's going to be ongoing.
Oh, it's an ongoing where they.
Yeah.
They just weren't charging us for certain things they were doing, that it's not a catch-up, it's a. No.
No, no. All right, I thought you were going to drop a non-council chamber. Andrew, did you want to add something?
No, we couldn't.
So you think they're, they're price gouging Portola Valley? I think there's question of whether the town can afford it, it's a huge, huge change in the budget.
How did they justify it?
Just unaccounted costs, they want to have a hundred percent cost recovery.
They definitely weren't charging for things that they do. Like remember about twenty years ago when hospitals started charging, they gave you Tylenol in the hospital? It was a, it was a real thing, a real costing before they'd been giving it to you and they decided they should charge you.
For each word they talked to you?
Yeah, they're trying, you know, over. Yeah. So there was a sheriff's queue, there was a Q and A with the sheriff, which is why our meeting got rescheduled, and then it was just on the council agenda last night, I did not hear either of those conversations, but it's just such a significant budget item for our town related to law enforcement, yeah. Brought up some interesting conversations about the value of the sheriff in Portola Valley or not. Okay, anything else on the law enforcement? Subcommittee funds? Any of? Okay, okay, thank you. Any other subcommittees want to share anything? Anything from housing?
We met with the Inclusionary Fund Subcommittee. And, and.
Directly in, so I can hear it.
We met with the Inclusionary Fund Subcommittee and we had some conversations around just the proposal that we had put out there as the housing fund for the Race and Equity Committee and currently other Subcommittee, other committees are also working towards creating a requests or guidelines and proposals and, and we'll be in charge of putting all of those together to put forth, and again, the council is going to be the person, the, the folks that finally decide on where to go next and how to move forward, but, but we'll be putting all of those guidelines and requests together in one document and submitting those to the council.
So will this committee be putting them all together in some way?
By we, it's the royal we, I am. But I, but I want to represent the committee and not, not be, you know, totally on my own doing this, so I just want to make sure that that is recorded, it's not just me, but it's me as part of the committee.
I don't think you were alone, because I think Judy volunteered you for that task, so she's there with you.
Yes, yes.
Got your back.
She, you mean voluntold?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
That's the trouble with having this wonderful skill set that I've not shared with her.
Yeah, and I'm on the sub, the equivalent Subcommittee for the Finance Committee.
Right. Are you all still working? On the, because were you going to be also meeting?
Yes, we're, we also had a, a draft, I mean, what, what I was going to say is that the Race and Equity Subcommittee is like leadership and having gotten this done a long time ago was definitely recognized. The Finance Committee is pretty close there, it's the Open Space Committee that is farther behind in coming up with their proposals.
They have their proposal, and I think at this point. Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. And once the Finance Committee has, and the Finance Committee already has a document. Would it be possible for me to obtain that document, yes, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other subcommittees want to report anything? For for the town seal. Pretty much the next step for the town seal process is this speaker panel, Kim has already identified a speaker or a speaker, would that be the word? To help the community learn about like the review of public symbols, that process. But, you know, we want to pay our speakers, so that relates to another budget item. Which I'll just cover now, since it's relative to this. Since we did not meet previously for our last meeting, since we didn't have quorum, we were not able to vote on our budget, so we were not able to submit our budget. But I've communicated with the Town Finance Director and she said that after the Town Council approved the overall budget, we can submit an amendment and a request, so we just have to wait for that opportunity now, and I think that will put us in the, in the fall for executing this speaker series.
About a series or an evening. So we should, we should, even though it's the fall, we should move soon to get a date, because they fill up evenings with this is a match and sometimes it's, you know, there's this process to go through to get the room reserved, so.
Yes, John?
On this subject, I wonder if it makes sense to invite or communicate with the woman who designed the town seal, her name is Val Steinberg. I hope she's still with us, a little older than me, but good chance she is, she also did the San Antonio County Seal. Wonderful artist, and it would be very interesting to hear with today's perspective what her thoughts and feelings are, because they might be significantly, you know. She might be of real help in a constructive way. And if I would be willing to try to find out where she is, if she's still on the planet. If, if any, if, if the community thinks that's a good thing to do.
What's her name again, John?
Val Steinberg.
Val. Sure.
I believe she also taught art in this, 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 my mom taught anywhere to call that, you know, the person.
Great, John, yeah, if you want to pass on that connection, that'd be great.
Well, I've got to make the connection, we'll see if I can.
Potentially make and pass on, yes. Excellent, for land acknowledgement, I'm going to share some more, have some more prepared at another point, I guess I, I could have been part of subcommittee reports. I'll just wait till it's on old business. All right, any other subcommittees care to report? All right, very good. Good work, subcommittees. Oh. There's iPhone Jerry with us. Is that Johnny Clark?
I don't think so.
And our, I forgot to mention our student liaison, Paul Koaja is, he's traveling today, so can't be with us. Salud.
He's moving away, is he not, to go to college?
Is he? Wow.
If, I don't know what town policy is, but if you wanted to participate from college, I can't see reason not to, but I defer to, I'm not familiar with all town policies about who serves on what committee, or very least in the advisory role. And there might be others young people who go up here and may come back here.
Great, well, I will check in.
I know one, a very lovely young woman. Kristen, she's going to Howard. I'd be curious to ask her, she might be interested in things like the Marcus Woods.
Sure. Sounds, sounds good.
On that note, I have created a job description or a description for that position.
Oh, excellent.
A volunteer, so I will submit that for our next meeting.
Excellent. The town, the town council, you probably already noticed, but the town council is in a process of updating the committee handbook.
Oh, great.
So that seems like it would be good input for that process, yeah.
Great, do I submit that directly to you, or do I? Sorry.
For the next agenda, yes, you can submit that to me as part of the agenda packet materials, and then there are, I can talk to you about who from the council is.
Working on that.
Working on the committee.
It's not, it's not imminent, the first thing that's going to happen is this.
Yes. Not imminent.
Brown, non-Brown committee.
Oh, right, yeah.
That's done, then the handbook will get revised.
Great.
Brown. Didn't understand the first part of it.
I would talk about a little later.
Yeah. Okay, excellent. So there's somebody out there, anyone from the public want to comment on anything?
I think that might be Jerry Welsh. I'm not sure. I saw a head go by.
Okay. Um, new business, see, discuss town policy on facility rental for non-residents. It's just come to my attention a few, like multiple times lately, people wanting to rent town facilities who are not Portola Valley residents and not being able to. And kind of having the reaction of like, what's going on with this? In Redwood City, we let non-residents rent, you know? So I know we've talked about this in our committee previously, but it just seemed like it, it was popping up multiple times as a, as a, an issue that could relate to our, our committee. So it is, it is the policy that the, all the facilities here are just for residents. And I think it is actually even defined as, yeah. Oh. Oh, got it.
Well, I think it would be, we should learn what the history is because when it, when the new town center was first formed, there was a fee schedule set for using it and there was one rate for residents and another rate for non-residents. And so for a while at least, it was available for non-resident. And I think they got dropped just because it was so busy, it was so overwhelmed. And people, you know, plan weddings a year ahead and.
Hold on Judy. iPhone Jerry, could you please turn your video off?
You're giving us all vertigo.
I see. Sorry about that. I must have touched the button.
Okay, if you could just turn your video off, please.
You better keep it steady.
It was up on the same name. Um, how do you do it? See you, make me walk back. I don't know what it was on. I had it taken. Sorry, I'm trying to figure it out for her.
Anyway, my, my understanding is that it it became a matter of people in town not being able to get in a date when they wanted. But I don't know for sure. Someone must know the history of this.
I can't get the video on.
There should be a button in your bottom left that says stop video. Or at the very least, if you could put your device down and stop moving. Adnan to the rescue. Thank you, Adnan. Okay, great. Um, yes, looking up the history, I looked, I looked at the town website to see the fees and there's nothing about availability to non-residents. There's, it's just.
No, what I'm saying is there is not now, but historically there was. So it would be important to understand why they changed before we make recommendations about what to do.
Yep, so.
I don't know, you know, I have an historical memory on the staff now, it's different, so it's true. No, who would know that?
Howard, yeah.
Howard, right, yeah.
It may be in the minutes too, but it needs a lot of reading.
Yeah, council, finance committee may have talked about it at some point, I don't know.
Because of the budget issue and having unrealized costs. And particularly with the rentals don't cover the cost by any. So I think we're actually looking at this policy. So it might be a very good time for you to make a recommendation, actually. Because we're probably going to increase rates to cover costs.
So then we should get in proactively, no matter what the reason was before.
Well, that's, yeah, I, I, that would be my thought if you, if, if this committee has a strong sense of what the right thing to do is and yeah.
Well, it does seem that it, it would be incumbent on us not to be too elitist, not to look too elitist, not to function in too elitist a way. And if in the fact that, in fact, it was that everything was getting booked up with out of town weddings kind of thing. It might be that part of our proposal is that the non-residents couldn't reserve until 60 days ahead or something, 90 days ahead. And, and clearly they should probably have a different fee schedule, I would think. I don't think that's due to this just because we've all paid taxes to support it.
So I am, I guess I'm wondering, is there anyone on the committee who feels inspired to, to look into this subject? Or wants to look into the history, maybe talk to town staff about the current reality? And then come back to the committee next meeting? Anybody interested?
Well, should we hear what, what people think about it?
Yeah.
Once we figure out sort of how we feel about it, then we can draft and move it.
Sure, John?
It does strike me like it's good to know the history. I prefer to, I'm not sure I love to be the research, although I've got a lot going on. But again, as one who used to know a lot of, knew a lot of town history, but not about this specific subject, I just think Val, you don't know, even if that's a change. Different decision today. On another point related to this, I'm sure you wouldn't allow a private party to rent, say, the community room and discriminate based on race, origin, national origin, sex, sexual preference, so on and so forth. But I wish a little, and there are many things that are lawful but awful. That's a well-known legal phrase. And it apparently was legal last fall during a candidate's night, but I was asked to co-sponsor, lead organizer, not consulting me, and I don't know who among the other co-sponsors decided to forbid the press to enter or any non-Portola Valley residents. And I think we might look at whether we want to have a broader nondiscriminatory policy on the limits. For one thing, when I was in eighth grade at Peninsula School, Iris Anperl, who was the founder of the Institute of the Study of Nonviolence along with Joan Baez, came and spoke great, great class. Martin Luther King, who was in Grenada, Mississippi, tried to integrate the school and he was afraid someone would be shot. So he called up national press agent, you know, New York Times, Post, Life Magazine, send a reporter. Oh no, we'll wait till someone is shot. They won't send a report. So he called up Joan Baez and said, Joanie, if you came down here, the press would come. So she and I showed up. Now, the bigots in Grenada, Mississippi did not try to keep Iris Anperl and Joan Baez out of Grenada. Knew they couldn't do it under the US Constitution. But Joan Baez, had she attended that candidate's night, would have been barred from attending because she was inside, not in Portola Valley. I find that patently offensive. And I think that those kind of things, if there's a meeting that is a public concern, a policy to bar the press, I'm not sure we should cooperate with such methods. Just a thought.
Well, I, it seems to me that as we draft our policy, you know, that one of the paragraphs should say that all applications form have to, have to be very specific about that. You know, nondiscriminative is, has to be open to that. Well, it should be part of our policy suggestion.
Well, in our contracts, I believe, I know when I was on the council and when it removed garbage contract, I inserted a clause, which the garbage company couldn't, the nondiscrimination clause that they were assigned to, that didn't include sexual preference. This is in the late eighties, and I'll say that the guys from Los Angeles Garbage kind of choked when I suggested adding this. But they went, they choked their objections down and did it. And, you know, so it's, it's something to think about.
I'll volunteer to talk to Howard about the history and report back, but I won't volunteer to do any more homework than that.
Okay, so what is the homework that you want to do? You would want to understand?
Ask him about the history of why it changed from being open to non-residents to now being restricted to residents. That's the question before us, is it not? Yeah. Anything else you want me to ask him about while I have him?
Andrew, did you want to say something?
And I don't see why we need to open it up.
Open up the use of the town center campus?
Right now, it serves our residents pretty well. Have reservations for our party for example. Look, they're out, even on the policy, because you get out some of the groups. Once you start running out to private people, they are by definition excluded, doesn't include people. How also they have longstanding uses with Sea Scouts and the Boy Scouts. Boy Scouts used to be a discriminatory organization, registered in front of, younger, they used to be discriminatory. And so, but they've been there for a few years. Eventually passed the policy and here's the Boy Scouts guy then. You start getting issues like that as soon as you start running out to private parties. Those religious groups wanted to come here, scrap with another religious. Religious group with party policy, you know, you say you cannot be here, Mormons, you can't be here, Southern Baptist. So the minute you start running it out to people, then you hit. So I'm not sure it's all worth it. The private sector has plenty of places people can meet. But, yeah, that's just nice.
Hi, Harry, did you want to share something?
Yeah, I, I had a point of information, I think. It's on, it's on, it's on, it's on. That I think, or I understand that under the contract, the community center cannot be rented. So that particular buildings off the, off the, the contract, the original grant, the original gift, the charter.
Hard gift. Now, I remember it restricted, said we couldn't sell things.
No, you, you, they can't rent, you can't, the town cannot collect money on that.
We should double check. My understanding is they have in the past, but you can't, it has to comply with what we're then, I think, West German or maybe total, maybe Germany did United tax laws and their Internal Revenue Service checks unlike ours. So the very generous gentleman who gave his cock, they do an annual check, who's Houston? Have you violated anything? And he'll lose his tax deduction, that's the story. And it is, does mean sale, I believe it means sale of things, but let's.
Because it has been rented, it has been rented. So it expires.
So I'd say it'd be good, let's do some homework and get the, you know, get the facts and then discuss again. Adnan, was there anything you wanted to add at this moment?
No, that's okay, I'll hold.
Okay, so, um, Judy, thank you for looking into the, the history detail with the town staff and we can revisit at the next meeting on July 11th. Thank you. Okay, old business revisit.
Before we go, could we, is, is this the point where we can add new business or is there?
I'm so sorry, we skipped over item two, which was oral communications for items not on the agenda.
Yes.
Thank you. So this is an opportunity to speak the things, but we can't discuss.
Great. Okay, so I, I'd just like to bring up that if there is, I don't know if there is anything with the city, with the council or not, where, where they've discussed anything around using AI to take minutes, such as Otter or other programs, which would really help in terms of bringing a lot of that information to the, you know, just more easily. So I just wanted to bring that up and that could be something that could be used to potentially help. Inviting AI to our meetings as well. And by AI, I don't mean my initials.
But just to follow up on that point, of course, artificial intelligence may be becoming more perfectible as well as, not in this context, it might be dangerous.
Am I correct that we don't discuss these items?
Oh, yeah, okay. Well, I just wanted to, to put out that it.
Well, I think.
I don't want to discuss. It'll go on our next.
We can bring it up.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for rating me and I should have known better. Mea culpa.
Yeah, and mea culpa for not asking for oral communications for items not on the agenda. Does anybody else have items not on the agenda that they would like to?
Well, I have some things I'm working on, but perhaps they could just add to the future agenda. Mention them briefly now.
Could mention them.
Okay. In my letter.
The limit is two minutes.
I'm counting on you to time, well, I'm not going to watch my watch the new time.
I'll watch it.
Anyway, in my letter of application, I think there, there are opportunities for our committee to work with other town committees. One thing, historical resources on the restoration of children in Woodshoppers House, which is equivalent to a station on the underground railroad. Must not be allowed to fall down or be destroyed. Also, the cover story in The Atlantic in December is about a writer who went from an African-American man who went to Germany to look at how Germans remembered the Holocaust. And there they put silber stones, which I think in Germany they use stumbling stones, would commemorate when Jews were picked up and give the date of birth, the date they were arrested and the date of death. I think there's things like that we could do here. Unfortunately, conquistadors and really white Californians didn't keep records like the Nazis, but still there are things like that we could do. I guess we're looking at. Portola Valley voters, I believe, voted for the rest of the state to make it once again legal in 1964 to discriminate based on religion, race, national origin, passing Prop 14, 6040. I don't know if the vote was in town, we could get it from the county. Cost me 125 bucks, the town might find that data for free. Fortunately, the courts ruled it unconstitutional. Also, I think there are opportunities to perhaps sponsor concerts, perhaps indoors where people actually hear the words of this. Fox and John Els, a producer of Eyes on the Prize, cinematographer, the main cinematographer for that, and won a MacArthur Award for the first six episodes, a Genius Award. Lives in town. I believe he still has the graduate school of journalism at UC Berkeley. It'd be wonderful to have him do a talk. And one other thing. I would be willing to donate this calendar to the town. And the town could ask the library if they're willing to put it up and just pass it around. This is the calendar from each, each Justice Committee and here's a picture. Joan Baez, Iris Anperl, Martin Luther King, in Grenada, Mississippi in the fall of 1966. There are tenants meant that no, the press did cover it and no one was killed. And again, Joanie and Ira, Ira's no longer with us, would not have been allowed in the candidate's night that I co-sponsored, which I'm not proud of.
Thank you, John. That was a good two minutes. Is this the calendar that we received last year? Yeah, powerful calendar.
And I love that. I mean, thank God the press came and took those photos.
Andy, was there anything you wanted to share about this article you brought in? Andy Brown? Was there anything you wanted to share about this article that you brought in? Did you want to tell people about it? Now would be the opportunity.
Well, I brought this article, which I thought there were only going to be four people here. At any rate, it's, it's the best article I have read on what reparations mean. I've been very confused with what went on and with, or supposedly goes on with reparations. And this article, which does not deal with Portola Valley at all, but it, it deals with the business of reparations and I think it's well worth reading. Would anyone else like a copy of it?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Andy.
And this might be the kind of thing where occasionally, we've talked about, you know, our educational responsibility, occasionally posting something to the forum and on the, and on the town's other social media. So something like this might be a good thing to post, just.
Well, by bringing this article does not mean that I think that we ought to make that our main object.
No, no, no.
Just in terms of education.
I saw it and I read it and I felt it was valuable and good for us too.
Right, so the question is, is it, is it the kind of thing that it would be good for, for our group to post, just as an educational thing for the town to learn about as opposed to taking it, taking it on as any kind of a?
Yeah. I'm going to bring up another matter. In this world, aren't there earphones? But I have heard very little of what goes on and I suspect that I'm not the only one here that has heard very little of what is going on. But I have heard very little of what goes on and I suspect that I'm not the only one here that has heard very little of what is going on. Are there earphones? Does the town own a pair?
I don't know if the town owns a pair. One option would be to have a device that earphones connect to. I can turn the volume up a little more on here, but.
There ought to be a way to have earphones that are Bluetooth enabled that could help someone like Andy. Either that or to have, I know Andy often is, Andy often is hearing aids these days, but I think in this kind of environment, you might get echoes that don't work well. So there's got to be a technical solution in this day and age.
Part of the problem is it, you know, and if you watch any meetings from home on Zoom, unless everybody does absolutely this, you can't, Zoom participants can't hear much of anything either. So, so I, the major problem is probably this. When I do this, you, can you hear it well?
Not using these is a major problem.
It's a horrible problem and it's really hard for everybody. People on the council are basically MIA. If you're at home, you just, you see them going. Can't hear what they're saying.
Andy, I would like to encourage you, if ever you can't hear, speak up. Don't sit there and suffer.
I'd be speaking up almost constantly.
Well, do it. Let's see if it works.
But it does seem like, you know, theaters provide hearing devices and stuff when, when you go. It seems like it wouldn't be unreasonable to ask the town to have a couple of headphone things.
I, I've been interested in this general business of racial equality for a very long time, longer than most of you have been alive. And by that, I'm not saying I'm the world's greatest or anything else, but I think that I do have something that can be contributed to this committee that will be valuable, but I can't do it unless I hear what's going on.
Andy, are you able to see some of what's written over there at the bottom? I just turned on captions and I'm wondering if that is able to help some of what you are seeing. The captions are pretty small on there, but at least that could help you in some regard, in that regard, at the very least.
That's a big help and I will eye those very carefully. Thank you.
Andy, I'm impressed. Your eyes are better than mine. I'm having, I could read the material.
If those letters, if that font could be larger, it'd be better.
I think that that probably is something that we could potentially change in the setting, so we should definitely do that. Yes.
Yeah, the thing is, bring.
But not address this matter, just means that, that a part of the committee isn't being useful and it could be a bigger part than just me.
Andy, I'm really glad you said something and don't be afraid of speaking up because we have to solve this problem ASAP.
Right, Andy, as an interim, if you, it might be that if you have an iPad or a computer, you bring and you sign in on the Zoom, you could see the captions right in front of you and wouldn't have to be staring.
I have one, I'll bring it.
Yeah, that might help too.
Yeah, I think that would open up some options if you have a computer device to bring it next time.
But it's absolutely important to bring this up and, and appropriate. I think we're raising equity. And equity includes lots of things, including making sure everybody can hear, everybody can see, everybody can hear. It's just part of the game to put us all on an equal footing.
And it's not like we don't have the technology. And it's not like we don't have the technology.
All of us are ruled by the technology, ruled.
Indeed. And I am unfortunately ruled by a clock. We, this was the best time slot we could get, but we, we need to be out of here in like 15, 20 minutes because there's a committee after us at seven o'clock. I had to push for a not six o'clock stop time, so there we are. Okay, so unless there are other oral communications, Ryan, if it's not on the agenda, we will keep moving on. Okay, great. So old business revisit and discuss committee structure update draft proposal. So we.
Can I propose that if, especially if we're running a little late?
Yep.
We, we did, in the minutes that we just approved, we had talked about that a little bit. That committee is now, there's a committee of three and I'm one of them that's writing a new document to sort of clarify exactly what the Brown Act says and exactly what the non-Brown Act committees will have as their minimum requirements. So we'll be able to have a much more interesting discussion after we see that than we would now sort of just.
Sounds good. So you're saying that you're.
Put this on the next agenda.
Okay.
Which, which committee is that one?
It's, it's the committee of committees. It's like, it's tasked with, with this, this idea of, you know, would it be more efficient to have some committees be non-Brown Act committees? And what does that mean? We're trying to flesh out the, what does that mean and what are the procedures?
Okay, great. So we'll talk about that next meeting when we have a little bit more information. Thank you. Item five B is update on committee budget. I think I already described that, right? Yeah. Okay, and item C is update on land acknowledgement, feedback from other committees and proposal of next step for town council. So I am going to screen share a document right now. If you'll look at it with me, it's, it's a little, a little long, so I'll pretty much just say it verbally if you don't feel like reading it. Yeah, so basically, I with some guidance and support from Kim, the original land acknowledgement in Portola Valley mover and shaker. You know, there's pushback at the beginning of the year. I told you all a lot about it, we discussed it and I, you know, talked with a couple of different council members and specifically Craig Taylor, town council member, asked me to ask our committee, and I put that job on, to go talk to other committees about this subject, basically just get their, their feedback and consider whether we would make a revision and make that proposal to the town council. So I've talked to a bunch of committees. I've talked to finance and audit, emergency preparedness, wildfire preparedness, sustainability, trails and paths, parks and recreation, nature and science and geologic safety. Basically going to their meetings and sharing the context and the land acknowledgement and asking for feedback. And it's been, it's been a really interesting process to get to know these different committees and just hear from a broader swath of community feedback. So the most, so I listed some of the feedback that I got from these various conversations. The most consistent feedback by far is that the last sentence says, "We seek to understand the impact of these legacies on all beings and to find ways to make repair." And pretty much every committee, one, if not more than one person, mentioned that being the main thing they took issue with because of potential liability.
Especially the, the make repair in particular, not the rest of the sentence, but the make repair.
Yes, the, and to find ways to make repair. Just over and over, I heard that people feel like that opens us up, the lawsuits opens us up, opens the town and the residents up to being held financially accountable. And, you know, every time I'd say, well, there's no precedent for that and this was vetted through the town's attorney. But it was definitely the thing that really got people activated. So that was interesting to see just how very consistent that was. And, you know, it makes sense, we're a wealthy community and people are accustomed to discerning how to protect their wealth. And so this was definitely the one thing that stuck out. Generally, there's support and appreciation though. I thought that was interesting because this all started because of pushback that council members felt was significant enough to have these conversations. But overall, people thought good to have the land acknowledgements and good to, and the current version felt pretty good to them. People did comment though that it felt harsh, like harsh and sort of caustic. That was relatively consistent. People also questioned the relevance to their committee.
Should we hold questions or comments until you're done?
Yeah, I'll finish this one section and then another consistent feedback was just the action question of this is a land acknowledgement, but what is our community, our committee, their committee, you know, how are, how are we translating this into action around that subject and those relationships? And then the process, just that the process for rollout was not smooth and lacked communication and felt confusing to people. So yes, any questions so far? So, well, let me just share a little bit more. I have some other general observations that I could or could not share. And then some recommendations that I would make for revising the land acknowledgement and a sort of proposed timeline for how to, how to wrap this up. But opening up to questions so far.
Just comments that I think it's meant to be harsh. I think that that's the point and it is harsh. What happened on this land was harsh and.
Harsh is the name of the game. Not harsh, it's just sweet talk. And will never be anything except sweet talk in action. Sweet talk. We don't want it.
It strikes me as mild given the history. And if anyone thinks it's harsh, I think they should be a little reading of history and a little introspection. Also, the idea that there'd be legal liability sounds out of, way out of left field. To say we acknowledge the laws that we've done and want to seek a way to make repair, my God, that's a mild statement.
Agreed, so. Hey, Johnny, Johnny Clark. Thank you for chiming in and being here.
I mean, if anyone has a problem with it, sleep on it, think about it, dream about it a bit. I hope your subconscious wakes you up a little in the night.
I think a lot of people are terrified about reparations. The seed is open-ended and.
Well, but this is not a commitment to do anything.
No, I totally understand. Strikes me as paranoid.
And did you finish your?
Oh, just one thing about relevance. The relevance says that we are sitting on this land.
Absolutely.
That's the relevance. I mean, there's no other, it, it's relevant to every single human who is on this land.
Yes.
Also, people, what I heard people concerned was that because it was on their agenda, it meant they, they had to do something that, that, that it was on their agenda. And I think the idea that it's a town adopted language that's on the town letterhead, that the town is putting on everything. That's, that's the relevance. In addition, of course, to what Adam said, but that's the relevance. It doesn't have to be that their committee is working on this per se.
And they're being given a chance to comment, which, why not? But that doesn't, again, it doesn't mean they have to add it to their budget for the year to do something about this or whatever.
Yes. Other comments, questions right now?
Last thing, I do think that, you know, the process needs to be examined and I think that that's in the future. That's really good information to use for other things. And I'm really interested in number five about action too and, and what comes from this. And I think that that, for most of the people who think about number one or who brought up number one, is going to be very scary. So just want to put that out there. So there are certain things that are in opposition, which is exciting.
Right, there's a tension. A tension. Andrew?
I was at a
You have to speak directly into your microphone. I know.
I like, I like making it lean forward and listening.
Are leaning forward, we can't hear anything. I'm just leaning in, am I hearing in? Doesn't help.
So this is the, this is the acknowledgement of the Santa Clara University, which has a frickin' mission on it. Probably ought to feel a lot more guilty than anybody in Portola Valley should. But also it's a relationship with Union Pride, that we don't. But they say, "Santa Clara University sits on the land of the Alonee people. We trace their ancestry through the missions, DeWora, Santa Clara, and San Jose. We remember their connection to this region and give thanks for the opportunity to live, work, and pray in their traditional homeland and pay respect to their elders and to all Alonee people of the past and present." It's kind of milk toasty, given what actually happened on the property, but I think, I'm sure they got buy-in from the Alonee. Of course, a lot of the Alonee people are Catholic. To me, this is all our land acknowledging, their land acknowledging. It's kind of performative ownership, basically. We're not promising to do anything, we're not doing anything. We're just saying. So it almost doesn't matter what we say. I do think you know, the last sentence of the, of our current one doesn't bother me in the slightest. Rest of it strikes me as being goes beyond what's, what Portola Valley probably needs to be saying, but.
I do think even if words may not have an immediate effect on actions or policy, to at least be aware of the history is important. Certainly, the California history, I lived in the fourth grade at Orndale School, include very little about the abuse of Native Americans, very, very little. I had to get to the odd at college to learn more about that.
In fact, if you go to the California schools, most of us had to make a mission. Do you remember? Did you have to make a mission? I had to make a mission.
No, I was in a strange class that didn't, but mostly, yes.
I was saying, two minutes, I think we have two minutes left of 6:30.
I think the next meeting's not till seven, so I'd feel comfortable.
Okay.
Andy, will you send me the, the Santa Clara thing so I can put it in the minutes properly?
Yeah, I can.
Thank you. Great.
Okay, well, this is good feedback. Anybody else feedback or questions at the moment? Because I've basically been taking the feedback from the other committees and thinking about how to revise. So now I'm actually coming to our committee and rethinking. And I don't want to belabor this more than already has been, but yeah. So general observation was that overall, there was not, not so much pushback to this as what initially was the impetus for this, all these conversations. By far, the most consistent feedback was the issue of liability. It was interesting to see that just as a generational issue, speaking with committee members, that younger committee members generally felt more comfortable with this and kind of more, more years under one's proverbial belt. Less comfortable. And then also, it's just been a really good conversation starter. I, I agree and understand, you know, about the performative aspect of land acknowledgements and, you know, does it mean anything except if we turn it into action? But just even initially, I think going to all the committees and just having these conversations has been, has been good. I think it's, people have been thinking and people have, I think, grown some small level of awareness and people have been asking the question, well, how does this translate or not into action? And I think maybe, you know, continuing those conversations is definitely the essential part of continuing this, this process. And it did seem like different committees are, are interested in that and interested in asking the question, well, how can our committee explore these these issues?
One thing that occurs to me about how do we translate this into action in the present is while there may be no way to undo the past, certainly when things are happening in the present, we can take a stand when land development that is considered a violation of sacred land is being proposed in Santa Clara County by Native Americans and the committee for Green Foothills has worked against that development with the tribe, the tribal leaders and tribe members. The town of Portola Valley could send a letter to the Board of Supervisors, Santa Clara County, and weigh in. You know, we can take a stand today because we learned of the mistakes that were made 150 years, 100, 150 years ago or more.
Yeah, so I think that's an essential part of this process. I mean, the task from council member Taylor was just specifically to get feedback and consider revision, but I think it's opened up all these conversations about how does this land acknowledgement, like how do we actually take moments of action on, on going with this? So I think. So I think as part of this process, just, you know, coming up with ideas about how for our town this turns into action would be also valuable information for the town council when we give feedback back to them. So some recommendations I would make is to change from land acknowledgement to town of Portola Valley land acknowledgement. I think it's just a little more specific and would leave committees a little less confused. To initially, it was said that it was going to be added as a footer to the town website and that hasn't happened yet. So reminding and making sure that happens and then exploring other, you know, physical and digital spaces that it can have a presence. I have a revision actually, if I scroll down, but now that I'm hearing this feedback, I think I need to revise the revision, which actually fits into the proposed timeline, I think. And then once, I think after a new revision from this good feedback from this committee to share this with the Ramitush and Tamian people, like once that legwork is done, I believe that is their preference, like do your legwork and then let us review it. At least that's what the.
Should we go back around since the big complaint from the other committees?
That's contradictory to the way I ended saying this. I was on the, I mean, that's what the Ramitush web, the Ramitush website specifically says, like, do your homework, have your process and then let us review it before you finalize it, so.
You thought they wanted to draft it?
I haven't seen that on the, on their website, but no, but, but, I mean, if that's what they're saying, okay. Yeah, I hear you that it's like, it's not their work to engage in this and they are, and if you read about it from the indigenous perspective, it's like, there's clarity there, like this is not our work. Don't ask us to write it for you, you know, definitely. But the Ramitush specifically say, let us review it before, so I figure that'll be good.
So I have two things to say. One is that since the big thing that went wrong with process before was that the other committees were ticked off, they didn't see it before it became official, that maybe we should run it around to those committees before we go on to the next steps. Because to, to ask the Ramitush, et cetera, to review it and then change it again, seems to me would be a, a little disrespectful of asking them to review it if it wasn't the final, final thing. And the other is number two, to add as a footer, you know, we've been pushing to do that, but I would hold that until after we have the revision well done. There's no point in getting it, you know, getting it put up now because it'll take another six months to get changed if it's there. So don't do it until, until we have the one that we want to go on as a footer.
Same with number five, you know, working with various town bodies and it could be more groups than just this of how to use the land acknowledgement. It's like wrapping up this extensive process of considering a revision and then engaging in these next steps. Exploring.
Yeah, I don't think we should feel bad that it's been a long timeline. I think it's turned out to be a very good thing. It's involved a lot of people. There's a lot of weird paranoia at the beginning, but now, you know, it's turned out to be a valuable discussion to have throughout the town.
I agree, I agree. Well, okay, so I'm a little nervous, but I want to share the revision with you. And I feel like this might not be satisfactory to our committee and I'm totally welcome to that or open to that feedback. So the intention with revision was, the part about liability, I agree that it's unfounded, but I also think that personally, I think it's good to challenge people, but not to make them defensive. Because when people are defensive, their minds close. So it's like trying to strike that balance of, of challenging people's thinking, but in a way that doesn't make them shut down. And then also trying to bring the indigenous peoples' continued existence more into the statement. And then I was trying to, I want, I would like it to make it shorter. I was surprised that nobody was like, it's just a little long. But I wasn't successful at that yet because obviously I used a lot of words here. So I can read it. It's not, it seems like people are reading it now. Andrew, yes. Yes.
One puts stuff like this in the packet so we can see it before.
Absolutely.
Number two, this looks a lot better.
Okay, yeah, what do, what do people like or not like about this?
Looks a lot better.
What do people like or not like?
Well, I think he took out the most inflammatory words, which was make repair, which I think is good. Although I, I, I'm not opposed to the idea that we wouldn't find any ways to make repair. But I think that, that was the phrase that sent everybody off and spinning.
I wonder if there's a way to square the circle and have a little bit of both in a way that doesn't get hackles up, but invest in our relationship with them.
Well, that's.
A little perhaps, but it's.
I agree.
It's better than nothing.
It's a little tepid, but you know, I'm totally open to feedback.
Why, I mean, I don't, I have no word to suggest at the moment, but I just wonder if there's a way. You know, a little stronger, but you know, again, if there's some way not to raise someone, someone hackles, all the better.
Yeah. Yeah, it's just, you know, we are in this, we're like a committee of Portola Valley. And I think it's our, our committee's role to try and create a certain sense of progress. But it's like, how do we do that most effectively? Any other feedback? Cause I'm, you know, gonna. Absolutely.
I realized this sentence, we recognize the continued. Having continued and persistent side by side, side, mainly I had to read it six times to realize you weren't saying exactly the same things twice.
Okay, good point.
A way, way you could get rid of what are both of those words?
Absolutely. Yeah.
Maybe, maybe existence as the first word, that's the most important, the continued existence and resilience. Cause persistence and existence are the ones that are semi-duplicative and existence is a much better word.
So one of the other words that was removed was genocide.
Yeah, yes, that's true. And that's a very accurate word, so I'm not.
I think that should come back. I think that that's another strong word that is, that.
Honest?
Yeah.
Yeah.
By the way, I was taught in the fourth grade, now maybe it was my misunderstanding, but I don't think so. That there were no Native Americans that hadn't been killed in California. So there was nothing to do about it now, you know, and that obviously no way correct. And I was taught the last Native American was issued. Now, it's true.
John, I'm, I'm looking at the, I would love to talk about it.
I don't think they're still teaching that. I don't think they're still.
No, but I'm just saying that, I thank God, I hope they aren't.
Are there any last comments, suggestions, questions about this overall process and next steps or this specific revision as I revise it again?
Is there something on page three?
This, this is the, I can send this out to, this is.
Please, thank you.
Yeah.
Send it to me and I'll put it in the minutes.
Okay, sounds good. I'll send it to group and, and then.
It'd be nice if we could have one statement that takes in the abuses of Native Americans, indigenous people as well as the blacks that were slaves. It might be pushing it to fit that into one statement, but it would seem like if we could, that we'd be a good idea.
Valuable comment, good point.
I'm not sure it belongs to the statement, but California has a rich history of racial and religious discrimination that rivals any state in the union.
Yeah.
What was then the Asian Americans' prohibitions on buying land, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Well, the gaining citizenship.
As that calendar shows us, the justice, yeah, it's endless and immense. Okay, well, thank you for your, your feedback on this. I will revise and share again.
I move to adjourn.
Excellent. Is there a second? Murphy seconds, all in favor of adjournment?
I.
I, okay, thanks, everybody. Our next meeting, Tuesday, July 11th, six thirty here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for making it work, short notice.